...personifies today's UDC, then they should have it to cherish for themselves, whether in a cemetery, a museum, or other location outside of our civic space. History has shown us that no one is immune from oppression, and while in this particular case it was race, random differences have always been used to justify the denial of humanity, whether it's ethnicity, religion, gender, geography, tribe, language, or countless others. If we truly believe in equity, liberty, and justice for all, and genuinely pursue those precious American values, we should uphold them unequivocally. In addition to our values, as commissioners, you have compelling economic reasons to reconsider the iconic welcome mat of our county. We are striving to present ourselves as a world-class community, ready for investment from employers offering good jobs. These employers seek communities that welcome everyone, where the basic value of human rights is not in question. This monument drives away many who would enrich our community, and I urge you to consider the economic implications of inaction. As we've said before, we do not seek to change history. We cannot. No matter your views on the Civil War, a statue defending one group's subjugation of another blocks the door to our county's most prominent symbol of justice in government. Regardless of our ethnicity, background, or political persuasion, this impacts us as Americans and as human beings. The American Historical Association supports community decisions to remove monuments like ours, saying, "What changes with such removals is what American communities decide is worthy of civic honor." Having lived here for over a decade, I know that as a community that values fairness, justice, equity, neighborliness, representative democracy, truth, and rule of law, we can take action to better demonstrate those values. We are presenting a petition to you with over 900 signatures from residents of Chatham County, most of which have been hand gathered and which cross geographic, political, and demographic lines. This has been a neighbor-to-neighbor, community effort. Everyone who signed this petition has a story about why this monument didn't represent our community in 1907 and doesn't today. We are as much a part of history as those who came before us, and must now decide if this is the message we want to send about our community, because that's what we do every day at Stans. As commissioners, please ask yourselves, would you erect the statue today? And if the answer is no, then it's time to return it to its rightful owner without delay. In your packet, you have a summary of the facts around this statue, including the clear legal case for removal. The license states that this monument is the private property of the United Daughters of the Confederacy, and the county has merely authorized its placement here. It is fully within your rights to rescind that authorization, and we propose that you do so immediately. It's past time for Chatham County Commissioners to exercise their duty of care by removing this symbol which rebukes equal protection under the law and constitutes a threat to the general welfare of all Chatham citizens. We hereby request that you terminate the license agreement with the UDC and require them to remove their private property from our civic space. In the spirit of the final words of the Pledge of Allegiance recited earlier, "With liberty and justice for all," we eagerly await your swift action. Thank you.
So, Mr. Parker. Thank you all. We will now have additional public input. I would happily take a five-minute break if everyone's okay with that? Okay. Short recess. Thank you.
There are two restrooms. There are some over here and then some in the main lobby.
That's what everybody wants. I'm wearing it. Not an option.
Don't walk over his head. Don't walk over his head. This is a... It's been... I don't know. It's been four, four years. I told you. I'm gonna be orange. I'm gonna be orange. I'm gonna be orange. I'm gonna be orange. Yeah. You guys look good. You guys look good. You guys look good. I'm gonna be orange. 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 And thanks. This is actually, it's about the technology, which I meant, emails, which is probably this one. Yeah, I mean, I'm sure we have to wrestle here. Yeah. Yeah. Nice to find a big shoe. Yeah. The reason I have a footshoe. That's how you get a shoe there. Yeah, I think it's about the way the water, the water, the water. Yeah, I think it's about the way the water, the water, the water. Do you see over there? Do you see? 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 All right. You're gonna hear those things down there. I'm the clerk. The lady sitting right here will call the names of the microphone. She should be in here. The fact that you moved into the business. I didn't get that surprise. For worse, everything, you know, this ground. Maybe I thought it up for my own, it's wondering. Wow. Because it's a child, like, I don't know. Can I? Oh, there we go. I didn't know. 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 That's right. That's right. Yeah. The meatball. Sorry, you robbed me. No, 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 no. Sorry. I may, I may actually. I don't need to. What number are you? I'm not, I'm not speaking. Oh, I heard you sign that. No. Oh, oh. Um, did you, well, she makes the name out of the name. Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. It's all my. That's right. I have to tell these. 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 I have to tell these.
...that in actual combat, the sacrifices made are to preserve one another first and foremost. This esprit de corps was the driving force that led to the many monuments and memorials that were created both north and south in the remembrance of those who served their respective state, and to fulfill wishes of those who did not survive the conflict that they would never be forgotten. Many times I've been questioned as my thoughts for the country. Had the South prevailed in their attempt of independence, my response has always been this: Most likely, the Western expansion would have never occurred due to the likelihood of European countries would have reclaimed this continent. Fortunately, the same individuals who attempted to deal death upon each other now with the same zeal chose to support each other in forging a new nation that afforded its citizens opportunities unlike anywhere else on this earth. Every player had a part in this, and it was our collective duty...
You got one minute.
...to remember them. I suggest that the effort to move this monument is simply a step to erase from memory a portion of our history. What would be the next thing removed? Commissioners, I am most certain there are many others here tonight who share my concerns, opinions. If you would indulge me, I would like to ask them to be allowed to stand. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I would just like to say I'm in favor of the statues today, and a lot of ancestors of mine had fought and died, and they didn't die for slavery, they had no slaves. It was a rich man's war and a poor man's fight. And, I mean, that's just the way it was. I don't need three minutes to tell how I feel about it. It's been there, and I think you play a little loose with the facts, these people did, of the war. Because I think it started not because of slavery, but it ended the slavery. And that is what a lot of historians that I've heard have said, and as Robert E. Lee said, "The only good thing that come of the war was the end of slavery." So, I'm through with that.
Thank you.
Our next three speakers are Vicki Atkinson, Nancy Jacobs, Lita Hartman. And if everybody will state your name for the record when you come up to speak, please. Thank you.
My name is Vicki Atkinson. I live in Chatham County. I was born in North Carolina, and I've always lived in this state. I have ancestors who fought for the Confederacy. I am a Southerner. I believe the statue in front of the courthouse should be removed. The monument and others were put up during the Jim Crow era. They were part of a plan to hold on to white supremacy. The history that I learned about the Civil War growing up in North Carolina was limited and misleading. What I heard in my elementary and high school classes was that the North invaded the South in the war between the states. I heard about the lost cause, but I have since learned the truth. The Civil War was primarily about slavery and the economics of slavery. The cause of the Confederacy was wrong. The monuments honor the wrong side of history. A statue to white supremacy should not stand in front of our courthouse. No, we cannot change history, but we can tell the full story. As President George W. Bush said at the dedication for the Museum of African-American History and Culture, "A great nation does not hide its history. It faces its flaws, and it corrects them." There are many more flaws that we need to correct for our treatment of African-Americans in our criminal justice system, housing, education, and other areas. But we have the opportunity to correct this one flaw in our county relatively quickly. We can change what we honor about our past. We can remove the statue, and I hope we will do so.
I live in Chatham County. I want to first thank the commissioners for having this meeting, and thank you for letting me speak. Okay, so, I'm here because I believe it is our work to make things better for everyone. I want to know, why is this statue in front of the courthouse? For 112 years, people have had to see it every time they went through town. The only public bathroom available in Pittsburgh to people of color during segregation was in the basement there. We all know now, after so much publicity, that when the truth comes out, that it was placed there in 1907 to remind everyone who was in charge, to keep the idea of the Confederacy and the reimagined romantic idea of the South alive. People fought to perpetuate a terrible, violent, and unjust system. So even though the war was lost 160 years ago, this statue says to many, yes, the Confederacy lives. What exactly is being held on to here? I cannot see a reason for it to be here on public property. I want this statue to be removed and placed somewhere where people who want to see it can, and they can enjoy it and honor their ancestors. For many people, it's a symbol of oppression and a reminder of terrible times for their ancestors. Why would anyone want people to have to endure that? Let's show everyone that our community is a place of unity and understanding. Remove the statue and return it to the UDC.
Lita Hartman, Nikolai Mather, Carolyn Stern.
My name is Lita Hartman. I've lived in Chatham County for about 20 years. Thanks for having this hearing. I would like to address the idea that the statue is about history and heritage. If that's so, here's a piece of history we should consider. Not all white Southerners supported the Confederacy, not by a long shot. A good number of Southern Army officers chose to fight on the side of the Union, including two of Robert E. Lee's cousins and one of his nephews. Then, right here in the North Carolina Piedmont, we had the Red Strings. They were a secret underground group that did everything they could to sabotage the Confederacy: spying, helping soldiers desert, destroying supply lines. At their height, the Red Strings had 10,000 members across the state and beyond. The nation's very first draft was instituted by the Confederacy. Apparently, the Confederate Army couldn't raise enough volunteers. You wonder what ordinary conscripts would say about that rich man's war and the poor man's fight, especially because men who owned 20 slaves or more were exempt from that fight. Some conscripts spoke with their feet. North Carolina had an unusually high rate of desertion, perhaps as high as 25%. In fact, there were so many deserters in Chatham County that in March of 1862, the Army had to send a company of soldiers here to round them up. The end of the war didn't end the division either, especially when it came to monuments. Robert E. Lee spoke against them. He believed they would just pour salt on the nation's wounds and keep us from healing. Here's what he wrote in 1869 about a proposed monument in Gettysburg. "I think it wiser not to keep open the sores of war, but to follow the examples of those nations who endeavored to obliterate the marks of civil strife, to commit to oblivion the feelings engendered." Then there's the famous story of the time Lee went to visit a lady near Lexington, Virginia. She showed him a tree in her yard that was a casualty of the war. All its limbs had been shot off, and its trunk had been ruined by cannonballs. Lee said, "Cut it down, dear madam, and forget it." Given this history, it looks like the Daughters of the Confederacy in erecting their monuments were actually disrespecting Lee's wishes, not to mention denying some uncomfortable truths about the South's Civil War heritage. And in Pittsburgh's case, Lee's fears proved true. In 1907, shortly after the statue was unveiled, someone defaced it with black shoe polish and grease. Yes, the statue is a monument to fallen Confederate soldiers, but it is also, without a doubt, a symbol of division, and not just division between Black and White or North and South, which is why it never belonged on public land in the first place. And here we are, 112 years later, still divided. Isn't it time to let this soldier stack arms, stand down, and rest in peace?
Want to remind everyone.
Got you. Good evening. My name is Nikolai Mather. I'm 20 years old, and I live here in Pittsburgh off Mans Chapel Road. I'm a second-year student at UNC Charlotte where I'm currently slogging through final season, and I've lived in Chatham County for about as long as I can remember. I came home tonight to talk about an issue that's very close to my heart: What we plan to do with the Confederate memorial in front of our courthouse. I'm not here to try and push any sort of leftist Yankee agenda. I'm here because I care about the family I have here and the community I grew up in, because both of those things are hurting right now. So, it isn't really but one thing I want to contribute to this conversation, and that is this: Keeping this monument up is wholly, fully, on its face dishonesty. No matter what your interpretation of the statue is now, we know that those who built it at the time believed that Black people were subhuman. That monument was not built to accurately portray a complex and horrific moment in our county's history. It was built to sanitize it and glorify it. We can slap a plaque on it, we can wall it off from the public, we can even rechristen it as a monument to all soldiers, but at the end of the day, the intention behind its construction remains. And so does the impact. This statue is a direct source of trauma for Black and Brown residents of Chatham County. It's a reminder that this county was not a place where they could live without fear. In the post-Reconstruction period alone, seven Black Chathamites were lynched. One of them was Eugene Daniel. After being forced to confess to trespassing, a crime he likely didn't commit, he was dragged out of jail by a mob of about 50 people, who then shot him and hung him from a tree. It was 1921, he was 16. Despite the depth and breadth of this violence, I have never once seen a monument to the victims of slavery, lynching, and other forms of racial terrorism within our county's borders. How is that being honest? Listen, I love Pittsburgh, I love Chatham County, and I love my neighbors too, even the ones that are going to say nasty things about me on Chatham Chat List tonight. I love my hometown, which is why I so desperately wanted to tell the truth about its role in racist terrorism, about its complacency with white supremacy, about how it continues to traumatize Black and Brown residents by protecting its Confederate monument. Because if we acknowledge that truth, then maybe we can stop actively harming our friends and neighbors, because yes, they are still suffering. We have an opportunity here to come to grips with our past and take accountability for the actions of our ancestors. We have an opportunity to learn how to stop doing harm. We have an opportunity to be honest about our history. I urge the Board of Commissioners to take full advantage of that opportunity. Thank you for your time.
It's just less time for you to speak.
Carolyn Stern, Carolyn Wright, Jean Chapman.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Stern. I am a Chatham County resident. I have been since 1986, but I'm a North Carolinian. My parents were damn Yankees. They came here in 1960. My dad was a professor at Duke. And my parents, when they moved here, were not disturbed by the statue. They were curious about it, because all my ancestors are from Europe, so they didn't know anything about the Civil War, but the statue did give my mother an opportunity to explain to my brother and I what slavery was, that it was bad, what was going on in the South. You'll have to forgive me, I'm really nervous. There's a couple of things I wanted to make a point at, and I don't need the whole three minutes, and I think there's people here that can speak better than I can. I'd like to see the statue stay. I work in Durham, and I work in the building where it was ripped down, the Civil War statue. And I don't believe that it was ripped down by people who felt it was hurting. I think they were radical, I think they were sheep, I think they were being followed by somebody who someone said was loose and fast with the facts, and I think that was the truth. I do believe that the statue was erected to honor the dead soldiers, that the Confederate politicians put the Confederate soldiers in a situation where they had to carry the sin of the war on their backs, and they didn't get to come home. There were no graves. You weren't allowed to tend to a Confederate grave. It was treasonous. So, it's a monument to the dead, and I'm sorry, I'm not very eloquent. I have supervisors in Durham County who are Black who walked by that same statue for the last 20 years, the one like in Pittsburgh. And half of Durham, Durham County's employees are African-American. The county attorney is African-American, the county manager is African-American, half the board is African-American. And if anyone was ever disturbed by the statue in Durham, nobody ever talked about it, and when it was ripped down, it was never talked about it, except when we were sent home, because there were riots. But there was a problem with it, it was just quietly forgotten about, and it's sort of defeating to feel like it's a done deal already, and we're wasting our time talking to you I think if you don't keep it, you're sending a very incorrect message, because it's not honoring slavery. If it ever was, it's not now, and it hasn't been for many, many years. It's a memory to those who had family that died.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I thank you very much for your time.
Carolyn Wright, Jean Chapman, Bruce Davis.
My name is Jean Chapman, and I live in Bear Creek. I came to Chatham County in 1974 and went to work then in the beautiful community of the Haywood-Moncare Community Health Center, and have lived here ever since. I joined the ranks of those who tonight, who have come up with the great phrase, "To hold myself accountable for my ancestors." My growing-up life was in rural, small-town South Alabama, 75 miles south of Montgomery, where my ancestors on both sides had lived as small dirt farmers for a time out of mind. I love family history and family cemeteries, and have walked through untold family cemeteries scattered across South Alabama, and every male ancestor of the right age has a CSA plaque at the bottom of their grave, every one of them. My father was a good, kind, smart, curious man, who would have made a great teacher, which is what he wanted to do, but it was the '30s, they were poor, he had dropped out of school, and helped the family. And like too many of his time, he fell prey to the great lie, which was, "You may be poor white trash, but you're white, and that makes you better than all these other people." And he got a place of power out of that by becoming the chaplain of the Ku Klux Klan in Evergreen, Alabama, where he prayed over meetings promoting white supremacy and fear, which leads to hatred and racial violence. I grew up, as many people here have, in that environment, in the deeply, deeply segregated, racialized, deep South. As we've heard and as we know, the time period these statues were put up was not just that time period, this was the peak of racial terror lynchings across the South. That's when these statues were put up all across the South, and they had a message. The message was, "White supremacy now, white supremacy forever." And that's a tragedy. I'm here to add my voice to those who would like to see this symbol of white supremacy and the tragic places it leads to moved, and that we can, and unless our town wants to support white supremacy and that ideology, I would like to see it moved somewhere, because we're all one family, and it's time for us to respect that.
My name is Bruce Eugene Davis. I am a citizen of Chatham County. I am a descendant of several Civil War veterans. My genealogy could have led me to be a supporter of the Confederate St. Louvre monument that stands in the circle in Pittsburgh in front of our historic Chatham County courthouse, but it does not. As an American citizen, I do not support the idea of ownership as property of one human being by another. I do not support the idea of attempting secession of our state from the United States of America. I do not support the ideas and actions 40 years after the end of the Civil War to reframe those mistakes, and I want to note that those were mistakes. With the placement all across the South of monuments like ours here in Pittsburgh, these monuments were part of a rewriting of history and the resurgence of institutional racial inequality. As an informed citizen of Chatham County, I believe that our courthouse monument to that resurgence should be removed from public property and respectfully returned to its owners, Daughters of the Confederacy, in a civil and methodical manner. We have an opportunity here to set a good example for our children. We have an opportunity here to act in accordance with the best principles embedded in our North Carolina and US constitutions. So, that's my position. Thank you very much.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Commissioners, you have a moral decision, as well as a legal decision to make, and that decision, of course, will be judged on how well the decision promotes equality and justice for all the citizens of Chatham County. My name is Bob Pearson. My family's history goes back nearly 300 years in the South, in Virginia, Tennessee, and North Carolina. My ancestors fought in the Revolution, they fought in the Civil War. I'm a Navy veteran, I'm a resident of Chatham County, and I am the Education Chair of the East Chatham County NAACP. I understand the value that many people place on the Confederate statue, a war in which white Southerners believed ended in utter defeat and the deaths of hundreds of thousands of their sons, husbands, fathers, and brothers. Had that cause prevailed, however, 4 million Black Americans would have been enslaved forever. The Confederate Constitution required it. Instead, the 4 million became free citizens with a right to vote and to enjoy the equal protection of the law, just like all other Americans. These rights were destroyed when the Southern leadership came home to reimpose an order as close to slavery as possible. Chief among these weapons was lynching, murder by mob, even celebrated and photographed by the mob, to terrorize Black Americans and force them to give up their rights. In North Carolina, with one exception, there were only three counties with as many as six lynchings. Chatham County is one of those three counties. Four people were lynched in a single day. Those six lynchings and the political order that supported it are as much a part of the history of Chatham County as is a statue honoring Confederate veterans. Those victims, too, should be properly remembered. So let us use this moment for reconciliation, to share all the history of Chatham County and build a new narrative. Your commitment to advance the cause of equality and justice for every citizen in Chatham County is the only goal that one can morally pursue. Thank you very much.
My name is Jean Brooks. I live in Chatham County, Pittsburgh. I'd come at this thing from a little bit different perspective. I understand what I've heard here tonight, and if I thought that that statue was just about slavery or racism, I'd sign that petition myself with the other 900 people, which, by the way, don't represent a percentage of Chatham County. These people say it did, but that's neither here nor there. Robert E. Lee, before the Civil War, when many leaders in the North were equivocating, said that slavery was the greatest moral evil in our land. I think he was right. Most of the people in North Carolina did not own slaves. I really didn't even want to get into that, but I think it needs to be responded to. There's a small percentage, especially in the Piedmont. Well, why in the world did they get in this war? Well, a Raleigh newspaper at the time said that North Carolinians, and this was, and the trouble was coming, would compromise on anything but their honor. Honor meant a lot to people back then. Maybe it still does. I don't think it does to the degree that it once did. I can remember when people shook hands, it meant more than it does today. At least, that's my opinion. A group of citizens, many of them ministers, on the eve of the Civil War, met at Loves Creek Church just past Rocky River in western Chatham, and all of them were opposed to war and hoped, thought that the people of South Carolina had acted rashly at the firing on the federal fortress at Charleston. And they hoped that wise leaders in the North would use their influence to prevent People had, some people had a rather naive attitude about what this war was going to be like. I think President Lincoln did. He had no military experience. My three minutes up.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Was that thing working a little earlier?
Thank you. Folks, it's three minutes for everybody. Ms. Shea. Thank you, sir.
Sir.
Thank you.
Vicki Shea, Jan Nichols, Sheri DeRozio.
I have to sit down, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for giving all of us this opportunity to express our opinions. I think that all the opinions you will hear and have heard tonight are equally valuable and valid, and clearly, all opinions are deeply and passionately felt. I think that for most of us, our passion is not really about the Civil War. That time period is very removed from our daily lives. We know about it and think about it based on history books or stories handed down in families over many generations, but I don't really think we have a passion to refight the Civil War. We are all part of the United States now, we are all Americans. For some of us here tonight, our passions are in the present. Our national and local politics are highly polarized, and we disagree about many issues. But I think the county should give the statue back to its owners, not... But I think the county should give the statue back to its owners, not because of our present politics, but because of the circumstances in a different time, 1907. The time when the statue was placed in its current location was the period of Jim Crow, when white people were using both legal at the time and illegal means to make sure that black people, even if they were no longer slaves, did not have equal rights. And the place it was put up, county property, in fact, the county courthouse, served to demonstrate to black people that white people controlled this county, its government, and its justice system. I believe that most people in Chatham County have moved beyond that way of thinking and acting, but that statue is frozen in a terrible time and place. I don't think it should loom any longer over our government or our justice system. I think it is time to give it back to the private group that owns it, the Daughters of the Confederacy, so they can place it on private property and honor it as they wish. Give it back.
Jan Nichols, Sheri DeRosia, Ernest Roberts.
Good evening, good evening, commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm a resident of Chatham County, and I'm here tonight as chair of the Chatham County Democratic Party. At our 2019 Democratic County Convention, the convention delegates passed a resolution regarding the Confederate monument located at the historic courthouse, and I am presenting that resolution to you this evening. A resolution calling for the Chatham County Commissioners to return the Confederate monument in front of the historic courthouse in Pittsboro to its owners. Whereas the Confederate statue in front of the historic courthouse in Pittsboro was purchased by and is owned by the Winnie Davis Chapter of the United Daughters of the Confederacy, and whereas in 1907 pursuant to a written license granted by the Chatham County Commissioners to that group, the monument was removed from their private property and was permitted to be placed where presently located. And whereas, when granted such license, the local chapter of the UDC was required to cut down the tree in front of the courthouse near to the place proposed for said monument, and the said monument may remain in the care and keeping of the said Daughters of the Confederacy. And whereas the North Carolina state law that purports to limit the movement or removal of objects of remembrance has certain exceptions setting forth circumstances to which the law does not apply, and whereas the circumstances here in Chatham County are squarely within one such exception to the law as follows: An object of remembrance owned by a private party, and that is the subject of a legal agreement between the private party and the state, or a political subdivision of the state governing the removal or relocation of that property. And whereas the presence of the monument on public property forces our county government and all taxpayers in Chatham County to endorse the values of the UDC embodied by said monument, and whereas the individual citizens have a First Right Amendment to keep monuments on their private property, I'll cut to the resolved, that the Chatham County Democratic Party support a request to be presented to the Chatham County Commissioners to take measures necessary to return the monument in front of the historic courthouse in Pittsboro to its owner, the UDC. Adopted, March 30th, 2019. Thank you.
Sheri DeRosia, Ernest Roberts, Steve Marley.
Hi, my name is Sheri DeRosia, and I live in Pittsboro. And I am gonna keep this really short and just say, I urge you to ask the UDC to take back the monument. Thanks.
Ernest Roberts, Steve Marley, Farrell Moose.
I'm glad to know slavery only existed in the South, and that was from 1861 to 1865. My name is Keith Roberts. Tonight, you heard from a group, Chatham for All, as they tried to convince you that our statue and all other statues were really about intimidation and white supremacy. I want you to know that there were a lot of monuments put up in North Carolina during the same time period as our beloved Hero's Monument, and not all of them were to the Confederate dead. There were several monuments dedicated to Union troops. The New Jersey Monument in New Bern erected in 1908, where the United Daughters of the Confederacy hosted a reception for the Union veterans' families. It was said that the speeches reflected the sentiment that differences were no longer important, but rather the heroism and courage of American soldiers on both sides fighting for what they believed. There's the Massachusetts Monument in New Bern that was dedicated in 1908, and the Maine Monument in Southbury dedicated in 1876. There's the Colored Union Soldiers Monument dedicated in 1910 in Hertford County. There were many dedications made during these years. The United Daughters of the Confederacy donated time to many causes. There was a World War I plaque that was in our courthouse when it burned in 2010. Do you know that the United Daughters of the Confederacy, the Winnie Davis Chapter, were the presenters of this five-foot tall plaque? Do you think their motive was to promote white supremacy then, or honor the dead of this county who gave their lives to defend it? Chatham for All is a misleading name because it doesn't represent all, and no one group ever will. That is why we have different opinions, especially when it comes to who we honor and how we choose to honor them. Their group will not be happy if our monument is removed. The statue is just low-hanging fruit. They will not be happy until every monument, every street, everything that has a hint of Southern in it is eradicated. There are forces out there right now demanding the removal, there are forces out there right now demanding the removal of Thomas Jefferson and George Washington statues. The mayor of Winston-Salem wants to remove the word Dixie from the Dixie Classic. World War I and World War II memorials have already been defaced. Groups have already started attacking the churches and religious symbols. Nothing is safe, not even the 9/11 memorial on Highway 501, because the custodian is private, just like the United Daughters of the Confederacy. Will that become offensive to someone and have to be removed as well? The South was under military occupation from 1865 until 1877. We were left with nothing, and many homes were burned to the ground. Maybe that was the reason it took thirty-some years to scrape up enough money to honor the fallen. A quote from John Daniel Davidson, "Tearing down Confederate statues or any monuments from our history will not change the past, but it will make for a poorer, less enlightened future."
Steve Marley, Farrell Moose, Monica Jarnigan.
Hello, Steve. Hey, y'all. I appreciate the time to speak. My name is Farrell Moose. My family is still farming in the same area of Cabarrus County, NC, where they settled in the 1700s. Members of my family fought and died in the Civil War, and while I do sympathize with folks that see the Confederate memorial as solely honoring the veterans of that war, I think that would be better accomplished on a battlefield or in a cemetery. I fully support the work of Chatham for All, and the reason I do is that the historic courthouses are communities' most prominent symbol of commitment to each other and to equal protection under the law. To allow a Confederate monument to stand sentinel in front of it sends a very unambiguous message about these ideas. I understand somewhat the political difficulties in what I'm asking you, but I'd like to call on you to begin this process immediately. This hour in America's history is crucial. To relocate the monument now is as much part of history as when it was put up. This statue in this location is unbearable for those of us who would like to see our county honor the richness of a history that includes us all and our ability to change for the better. So I'd like y'all to give it back to the Daughters of Confederacy and replant that tree.
Monica Jarnigan, Sarah Beck.
Can I just start? Go ahead. Mrs. H, Mrs. H.A. London worked tirelessly to fundraise for the monument in the center of Pittsboro. Her husband wrote in 1898 of a meeting in Goldsboro that convened thousands of white men, quote, "For the sole and all-important purpose of securing white supremacy. This meeting," he said, "was composed of white men regardless of their past party affiliation. For the object in view was not so much the success of any political party as it was to restore Anglo-Saxon supremacy and good government." He continued, "Those who attended this meeting were not there as Democrats, or as Republicans, or as populists, but as white men," end quote. Just days later, thousands of white men descended on Wilmington to destroy black businesses, murder black citizens and those who support them, and reinstate all-white control of government. Within a few years, fundraising began for the statue in this town center with racialized terror and oppression, as expressed by the leaders of this community, for context. Some recognize these monuments are relics of slavery and racial intimidation, but wish to keep them in place for education and to avoid a repeat of history. This is a country where the net worth of white households is roughly 13% higher on average than black households. Black infants are about 230% more likely than white infants to die before their first birthdays. Non-Hispanic black women experience maternal deaths at three to four times that of non-Hispanic white women regardless of socioeconomic status. Although rates of drug use and sales are similar across racial and ethnic lines, black people represent nearly 40% of those incarcerated in state or federal prison for drug law violations, even though they represent only 13% of the population overall. chattel slavery has been abolished, but racial disparities and white supremacy are as current as ever. These statistics are real. The past may be the past, but this is our present, and as a collective, we white Americans have not learned from the past in a broad sense. Moving these statues from places of public prominence and reverence is part of a broader movement to reconcile with our past, not erase it. Our county has an opportunity to be part of that reconciliation and movement forward. Thank you to the folks presenting, who've presented earlier, for doing this work for our community. Thank you to Bree Newsom, Takiya Thompson, Maya Little, and so many others for taking huge risks to confront white supremacy relics head-on when what we refer to as civil discussion fails to bring about results. Activists and organizers in other communities worked for years behind the scenes and were met with resistance by those in power. Chatham County has just begun these public conversations. Tensions are already extremely high with people taking sides. I urge the board to come to a quick decision: living, breathing humans over property.
Sarah Beck, Wendy Hazlett, Robin Whittington.
Hello, my name is Sarah Beck, and I'm here today to express my support for the Chatham County Democrats' resolution to return the Confederate statue to the United Daughters of the Confederacy. I have been a proud Southerner my whole life, and I've been lucky enough to call Chatham County my home for many years. However, I'm ashamed of how long we've allowed this Confederate statue to stand. After 112 years in front of the courthouse, where justice is served and where everyone is supposed to have equal protection under the law, it is time for the Confederate soldier to come down. The monument was not placed by the UDC in the middle of Pittsboro to recognize the fallen Confederate soldiers from Chatham County, and it was not placed there to preserve history. If this were the case, we would also see statues from the Revolutionary War, World War I, World War II, even Vietnam. I mean, plenty of Chatham County citizens died then, so why don't they have monuments in the middle of town square, too? The answer is simple. It's because the Confederate statue serves a different purpose. It was intentionally erected to intimidate, terrorize, and send a clear message of hatred to the black community. And what most people don't realize is that the monument was placed in 1907, which is almost half a century after the end of the Civil War. People also don't know that the UDC placed over 700 other monuments across the South in the early 1900s, when America was plagued by Jim Crow segregation laws. The mass production and public placement of these statues was a targeted effort to promote white supremacy in a time when black Americans were just starting to have a voice at the table. I would like to think the intention of the monument was solely to represent lives lost in the war, and I know many of you would, too, but the monument is a daily reminder of oppression and injustice for many black residents in our community. Removing the statue is the least we can do, and is only a small step in acknowledging the pain and suffering that is still endured by our black neighbors today. I'm asking you to act swiftly and strive to make our home a more inclusive and equitable place by returning the monument to its rightful owners. In the words of Martin Luther King Jr., "The time is always right to do what is right."
Wendy Hazlett, Robin Whittington, Blair Reeves.
I'm Robin Whittington. It's a little difficult coming up here when you think you already know what your decision is. Kind of feel like that we're here for no reason at all. I almost left at break time for that reason, but I'm gonna have my say. I look around, and I see these people who are too angry because the statue is still up in 2019. And it means we're racist, we're bigots? Look around. We have black American people with white American people having children, who are having a life together, who are in love. There's nothing racist about it. It's about a horrible war that should have never been, but it was. That's not us. We have actually progressed. We do love our neighbor. And by the way, to those of you who called our black brothers and sisters African-American, they're just American.
Blair Reeves, Maya Cricker, Stacy Lianza.
I'm Maya Cricker, and I'm a resident of Chatham County. A Confederate sentinel guards the doorway of our courthouse, a monument to our history. You can't rewrite history. A history of the mass production in factories of hundreds of statues like this one. Ours, like the other monuments, were erected in the early 1900s by the United Daughters of the Confederacy at the height of violent efforts to prevent black people from voting and rampant lynchings throughout the South. The United Daughters of the Confederacy justified Jim Crow laws and glorified the Ku Klux Klan for maintaining order. The UDC built a monument to the Klan in 1926. That the majority of these monuments were built in front of courthouses was no accident. The intent was to send a message that I understand all too well. In 1964, I was arrested in Albany, Georgia with nineteen others while peacefully demonstrating for civil rights and social justice. We were told, "You're not in Supreme Court country now." The judge handed out the sentence before the trial started. We were in jail for 28 days that time. In the, this was the 1960s, the height of the civil rights movement, and again, there was, statues were mass-produced and erected in the South, and the message was very clear: Justice is a guarded privilege of whites, and white supremacy is the rule of law in our courts. And this was also a time of intimidation of judges, the murder of, um, black jurors, and the general limitation, intimidation of the people in the justice system. We can't rewrite history, but we can make history. Today, when equal treatment by our justice systems remains a hope rather than a reality, I am asking you to remove the Confederate soldier with the gun and the terrible legacy he guards from the front of our courthouse as a message and a commitment that here in Chatham County, we are all equal in the light, in the eyes of the law and our government institutions. Thank you.
Stacy Lianza, Ruth Meeks, Anthony Bright.
Hey, I'm Stacy. I live in Chatham County, in Pittsboro, North. My thoughts about the Confederate soldier statue from the perspective of a white Northerner who grew up learning all about the civil rights movement but nothing about the Civil War other than from the northern perspective. First, history is written by the victors, and the victors of the Civil War are the northern white people. From my perspective, history- From my perspective, history has diminished the voices of the South, both black and white to varying degrees. We Northerners have not heard much of your stories, and that isn't right. My point is that the conflict over the Confederate statue is a symptom of a much bigger problem, the problem of power imbalances in the South. The voices of the regular people of the South, both black and white, are not being heard or represented by those in power. Merely removing the statue won't resolve the conflict. It will be a small victory for the African-American community and their progressive allies, but racism will still be alive and well. And it will further alienate the native Southerners, deepening the rift between the two groups. What's needed is reconciliation. The true stories of the South, both black and white, need to be heard by each other and the rest of us. The real stories underneath the arguments, the justifications, and the bravado. The bravado. The only way to reconciliation and justice is to listen. This is crucial. Once that happens, it will be easy to replace the Confederate Soldier statues that tell only a tiny part of one story with ones that represent the whole story. The statue has become a potent symbol of this unresolved power imbalance. Let's remove it and put it into a place dedicated to reconciliation, where it can do some good as such a powerful symbol. Let's, let's put it in a museum, call for new artwork to represent all sides of the stories, and create a safe place for all people to tell their personal stories in a respectful way. And most importantly, a place where we can all learn to listen with an open mind to other people's stories, no matter who they are. Honest communication is how true reconciliation happens. It's the only way. We can do this in Chatham County. Let's not stop at removing the statue, but keep going. Thank you.
Ruth Meeks, Anthony Bright, James Ward.
Good evening. Thank the Board of Commissioners for allowing me to come to speak against the removal of the statue. Let me tell you a little bit about myself. My name is Ruth Norwood Meeks. I am 75 years old, now living in Lee County, but I grew up here in Chatham County and was educated at Pittsboro High School, graduated in 1962. Mr. Brooks was one of my teachers. My family ties can be traced back to the 1700s. I have ancestors who, according to my mother, were granted land in Chatham County from the King of England. Others who fought during the Civil War. Family names are Boone, Eubanks, Hadley, Harris, Hearn, and of course, Norwood. And I'm sure if I did more research, I could find a pile more, 'cause Chatham County was home. I remember when the courthouse was a dark red. Today, I'm here to tell you about my great-great-grandfather. I have a picture. He was 24 years old when this picture was taken. His name is Private Wiley Simeon Boone. He was a farmer. He had a small farm in the Hanks Chapel Church community. There is a family plot of unmarked graves assumed to be his ancestors, and also mine. Simeon, as he was called by his family, because he had an ancestor whose name was Wiley, was not a slave owner. He was just a farmer. He and his younger brother, Charles, joined the Confederate Army in September 1861. They trained at Camp Mangum near Raleigh and were assigned Company D, known as the Hall River Boys, of the 35th Regiment. And in November of 60, 1861, after a poor showing in New Bern in the spring of 62, the regiment was ordered to Malvern Hill, Virginia. Facing overwhelming odds of Union forces, Private Boone was killed July 1st, 1862, 100 years before I graduated from high school. Simeon left behind a wife and a two-year-old son. Let me quote from the UDC ritual. We've heard it a lot about the UDC right tonight. Quote, "Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we adore thy love and providence in the history of our country, and especially would we thank thee for our Confederate history. We thank thee for its pure record of virtue, value, and sacrifice, and for the inspiring reflections that despite its bitter disappointments and sorrows, it proclaims for us to all the world that we came through these years of trial and struggle with our batter shields pure. Our character as a patriotic and courageous people, untarnished, and nothing to regret in our defense of the rights and the honor of our Southland."
Thank you, ma'am.
The UDC is responsible for the statues, the bravery of husbands, fathers, and sons. I claim the statue placed on the grounds of the courthouse to honor the bravery of Private Wiley Simeon Boone. One of the first casualties from Chatham County, Private Boone gave his life protecting his family, his home, his Chatham County, and North Carolina, not slavery. Thank you.
Anthony Bright, James Ward, Beth Cricker. Shelley Colbert, Charles Letterlo, Larry Brooks.
My name is Charles Letterlo. My family came here in the late 1700s. I grew up on a dairy farm. I'm no expert, but I know a little bit about farm life and farm work. 150 years ago, in simpler times, farm life was quite different than today. If landowners or farmers didn't have enough children and family to tend the farm, they needed slaves. Not saying that's right or wrong, but that's just the way it was in that time, in that period of our history. Most slave owners treated their slaves well because they needed the help. They worked side by side in the fields and on the farms. I can't say there was never any abuse by some, but just like...
Folks, it's three minutes.
A good farmer, he took care of his slaves. I wish I could say there's no human trafficking today, no child abuse, no domestic abuse, but I can't tell you that. Maybe these are some things that we need to consider more than the removal of the statue. These, I have respect for all people, black, white, Latino, no matter where you come from, unless a person proves they're not worthy of respect. I believe all humans are God's children, and I believe all lives matter. I also am convinced there are paid political activists traveling this country looking for cause to support. They prey on young minds, many like our college-age students. They get, get them fired up, then let them go do the dirty work, and these people fade back into the shadows. The statue at the courthouse was put there as a memorial to the Confederate soldiers, black and white, who fought for the cause they believed in. Are we to say their lives didn't matter and send this memorial away? I don't think we should say that at all. I've been around about 71 years, and I've never heard any local people complain about the statue in my lifetime. Only recently have we heard about problems from, mostly from people who have moved here who don't understand that, uh, that that's the way our history was years ago. Are we to let political activists dictate policy for our country?
Thank you, sir.
I would hope not. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Larry Brooks, Michael Hobbs, Julia Kennedy.
Our county commissioners, my name is Larry Brooks. I live in Bear Creek, North Carolina. I'm here tonight as a citizen, but also as president of the West Chatham NAACP. As you know, the NAACP is the oldest, largest civil rights organization in the United States and was founded by interracial groups of people who exercised the carriage of their conviction to combat racism and inequality in our country. It is the official position of National NAACP as articulated by our president, CEO Dedrick Jordan, and stated on our website that the quote, "Symbol of hatred and racism should not be venerated, and all those striking down statues, flags, and memorials will not solve all the challenges concerning race and inequality in America." It was symbolized an end to the reference and the celebration of values that have divided us too long. I, NC State President, former president, William Barber also said it's not enough just to take down the statue. Statues that promote white supremacy need to be taken down as well. So we are proud to join our sister chapter in South Carolina, Tennessee, Florida, Kentucky, and North Carolina in supporting their removal and the symbol that invite and cite validates both policies and actions that negatively affect the quality of life of any citizen in Chatham County. Let me conduct this by saying, and this will be my last statement on it, by saying, it is our hope that you decide to remove the statue, and our hope as well that you review your local policies and those handed down to you by the General Assembly, and remove it if you can and mitigate to the, to the extent of your authority and semblance and inequality in them. Thank you so much.
Dear Commissioners and fellow Chathamites, my name is Julia Kennedy, and I live in Chatham County. I come from a long line of Southerners. Ever since great-great-great-something-grandfather Hugh Campbell immigrated from Scotland to Raleigh to work on the Capitol as a stonemason. My grandmother's people are from Chatham County, and my ancestors fought for the Confederacy. I believe the Confederate statue in town should be removed. I grew up in Fayetteville and was surrounded by the great myth of the South. The Civil War was not fought in order for to perpetuate the brutal institution of slavery, an institution which enabled the fortunes of the South to rise, built upon the blood and bones of generations of people who were property and considered beneath humanity. The United Daughters of the Confederacy was formed in 1894 not only to provide assistance to veterans, which was needed, but also to promote the glory and continuation of the superiority of the white race. The organization's official stance today states the Confederate statues they raised money to have made and placed in public areas across the South were in no way meant to raise the crushing specter of Jim Crow or remind blacks to keep their place or suffer swift and brutal consequences. The UDC's own history, with a modicum of research you can look up, gives truth to the lie. In 1914, the House historian of the Mississippi Chapter, Laura Morgan Rose, wrote and published a children's book extolling the virtues of the Ku Klux Klan. In 1916, the president of the LA Chapter, Annie Cooper Burton, wrote her own book about the KKK. Essentially, both publications were love letters to the Klan. In 1926, the UDC put up a monument specifically dedicated to the KKK in North Carolina. In the language of racism, with the monuments of propaganda speak, they say, "We owned your blood, your flesh, your very lives. In our hearts and minds, you will never be equal, valued, or human." Thank you.
For the record, the name is Pete Zilve. Thank you very much. Thank you, Board, for having us, and Walter, thank you for serving as long as you have. I'm, I very much appreciate your efforts. Public Law 85-425, Section 410, "The administrator shall pay to each person who served in the military or naval forces of the Confederate States of America during the Civil War a monthly pension in the same amount and subject to the same conditions as would have been applicable to such persons under law in effect on December 31st, 1957. If his service in such forces had been services in the military or naval services of the United States..." That, my friends, is the definition of a veteran. I stand before you as a veteran of the US Coast Guard, six years. I look at that monument as a monument to veterans, not just to, not, and if it was a Union monument, I'd be fighting for it. If it was a, any other war, you have to give credit to the veterans that gave their life in war. That's all it says. It doesn't say anything about, on that monument, the front of it does not say, "To the white supremist." It does not. It says, "To the Confederate soldiers of Chatham County." All 1900 of them, and I'm gonna guess probably most of those never made it home, and probably most of them don't even have a grave site that could be found. On the side and on the rear, it just states who gave the monument and where the soldiers were stationed. Now, if, if we take this monument down, where does it end? Does it end at Thomas Jefferson's house bulldozing it? He had 600 slaves, right? Are we gonna get offended by war? Let's take the Vietnam Memorial down. Let's take the World War I Memorial down, the World War II, because if we're not offended by war, what the hell are we offended by? Thank you. I would like you to please consider keeping it. It's in front of the courthouse, which is now a museum, where it... It's in front of the courthouse, which is now a museum, where it belongs. Thank you.
At the beginning of the war, eighteen sixty, the population of North Carolina, ninety-six percent of the people lived here. They were from North Carolina. They weren't from a foreign country. They had been here for a couple of generations. Most of their descendants fought in Revolutionary War. I am a ninth-generation North Carolinian. My family has fought in every engagement this country's ever been in, including Afghanistan. There was thirty thousand casualties in North Carolina. We provided more troops, more casualties, and suffered more casualties than any other state bar none. There were thirteen thousand men from North Carolina that are unaccounted for. Their mothers don't have a clue where they're at. These monuments were erected to honor these men, just that simple. Had nothing to do with Jim Crow, or white racists, or nothing, none of that nonsense. And the fact that they were erected as far as they were, the South was devastated. They had no money to erect the monuments with, and it took them fifty and sixty years to erect them, just like the World War II monument in Washington, DC. It was erected over sixty years after World War II ended. So all this nonsense about Jim Crow is totally absurd. Like I stated before, ninety-six percent were from here. They had a vested interest. Three point six percent of this population were from other states within the South. Point four percent was from foreign countries overseas. They were North Carolina. They were fighting for their homes, and it's absurd to suggest that with less than one percent of the population having more than one slave, that they would go off and fight and die for slavery. I mean, it's totally absurd. That's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
W. Sadler, Calvin Conray, and I cannot read this name. Johnny, maybe?
Lindsay, can we get just a status check? What are, how are we looking on our?
We have about twenty speakers left.
Knocking them down.
All right, hello. Um. Being a child growing up in Chatham County, every time I drove into Pittsboro, I saw the statue standing there. I didn't understand why it was there. I didn't understand because it was erected in nineteen oh seven, long after the end of the Civil War, a whole generation later. It wasn't put there to embrace heritage. It was put there to cast fear on the lives of African-Americans. I feel like the day it was erected, it cast a shadow on Chatham County, and for a hundred and twelve years, the shadow has stayed on Chatham County. And I think now, it's 2019, and it's time to change. It's time to cast aside the hate. I want to grow up in a county that embraces our true American values, love, freedom, and opportunities for all. I want to live in a county that's pushing forward into the future, not trying to live in a bad time in the past. This is 2019, and it's time to take it down. Thank you for your time.
I'm sorry, I did not catch your name. Are you Calvin?
Calvin.
All right, thank you. Charlie Roy, Ted Dunn, Barb Alutis.
I think Ted's here. I'll go hunt him down.
It's okay.
I can't read it. It looks like Charles Roy. Chip Leroy, I'm sorry. Chip Leroy.
First of all, I'd like to thank the committee for hearing my views, and I'd just like to say that I don't have a prepared statement, but the people who fought, suffered, died, had families. They were all made veterans of the United States. The North and the South were all veterans, and granted, the rights of all veterans. And the statues that show that they were veterans, they had loved ones, they died. And if that shouldn't be remembered, and if we should forget our past, and those who were separated from their families, then everybody should have to do that and feel it and understand what was given. How many people here have been to war? Thank you. Thank you for your service. Those who have it, what do they know about war and death and sacrifice from your family and loved ones? As God is my witness, keep the statue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ted Dunn, Barb Alutis, John Shirley. Just please state your name.
Thank you, Commissioners. Citizens of Chatham County, my name is John Shirley. I've been a resident in Chatham County for about eleven years. I've heard a lot tonight about lynchings, and this isn't part of my statement. And yes, there were lynchings, and those are horrible, those are reprehensible, but the fact of the matter is, over twenty-five percent of those lynchings were white people that were accused of crime, the same as the black people were accused of crime. Should they have been lynched? That is true.
It's history minutes, folks. It's not an argument.
I'm not going to argue that point. You look up your history. My, I'm not going to make an attempt to educate anybody on the causes or the results of the war between the states. That's for another venue. My family goes back seven generations in South Carolina. My great-grandfather fought for the Confederacy. He was a private in Macbeth's light artillery. My great-grandfather had no slaves. He had a farm. He raised ten kids, some before the war between the states and some after, and that's what he did. He had no, he did not fight for slavery. He fought for his family, he fought for his home, and he fought for his state and fellow soldiers. He did not fight for slavery. The statue that's causing so much controversy is not about slavery. It was constructed in the memory of dead soldiers, dead Confederate soldiers, that fought for a cause that they believed in and that their ancestors believed in. We are now seeing a very widespread attack on our history. Apparently, if our speech does not conform to the current political correctness, then it should be silenced. In case, after case, a vocal minority claiming to be victims demand the destruction, removal, or concealment of objects of which they disapprove. Is this enlightenment? No. I think this is very dangerous. Instance in Durham Chapel Hill, the University of Notre Dame, where they covered up pictures of Columbus, University of Pennsylvania in the literature department, where they covered up a picture of Shakespeare because he didn't fit their criteria. We're on very dangerous ground. I think it's interesting that the Taliban and ISIS, when they take over a country or a city, the first thing they do is try to destroy their history, and that's what we're doing here. We're destroying our history. We need to stop now. We're setting a dangerous precedent.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Nelson Smith, John Graybill, William Cummings.
My name is Billy Cummings. I came to Chatham in nineteen seventy-two, so I've been around a little while. It's late, though, and I'm hungry, so I'm going to be real short. I thank you for listening to us all. I think it's a no-brainer, really. We've heard a lot of history, and I think a lot of it was compelling. It's clear that whatever the case was, why people were fighting or why they weren't, when the statue was put up was a different time. They weren't fighting then, and it was put up during the Jim Crow time. It did symbolize white supremacy. It's a racist statue. It shouldn't be on county property. I think you should give it back to the Daughters. Let's move forward. We're not getting anywhere with this. It's just going to polarize our community more, and we need to get together and move into the future. So I thank you for listening, but take it down.
John Graybill, John Wagner, Kim Beal.
I agree with those who believe the statue should be removed or relocated. However, the North Carolina General Assembly, I will not say in its infinite wisdom, passed a statute that prohibits removal or relocation of such statues except under certain circumstances. That statute exempts statues in two circumstances, in two situations that may be relevant here. One, an object of remembrance owned by a private party that is located on public property, and that is the subject of a legal agreement between the private party and the state or a political subdivision of the state governing the removal or relocation of the object. And secondly, an object of remembrance for which a building inspector or similar official has determined poses a threat to public safety because of an unsafe or dangerous condition. If either of these exceptions apply, the statue may simply be removed. As for the first exception, it could be argued that the order passed by the Commissioners on July eighth, nineteen oh seven, is not a legal agreement between the Daughters of the Confederacy and the county, and it could be argued that the order does not govern the removal or relocation of the statue. However, declining to remove the statue for those reasons would require a highly close and technical reading of the statue. I believe the statue here falls within the spirit of this particular exception because it's owned by a private party, is located on public property, and the nineteen oh seven order can be read to incorporate a presumption that the Commissioners didn't intend to grant the Daughters the right to leave the statue in that location forever. Although the better and stronger argument is that the statue falls within the first exception, you must face the possibility that some might disagree and that a lawsuit could be filed to prevent the removal of the statue. With this in mind, you may have several other courses of action. One, announce an intention to remove the statue on a certain future date in order to see whether litigation is threatened. Two, file a lawsuit yourself, asking a court to declare that you have the legal right to remove the statue. Three, as some have suggested, place certain other statues at the courthouse, e.g. a statue of a Union soldier facing South, I guess. A statue of Martin Luther King Jr. and/or other similar statues. There may be other options, including leaving things as they are. As for the second exception, there may be reason to believe that the statue actually poses a threat to public safety. Thank you.
John Wagner, Kim Beal, S.P. Akers.
Good evening. My name is John Wagner. I'm a resident of Chatham County. I was born and raised in North Carolina and raised my family here in Chatham County. And I want to thank you for starting out this with a mention of children, and I want that to be central to what we think about as we move forward. For too long, the center of our courthouse, the center of our county, the most prominent site, has been a statue that represents violence, threats, and death, and that needs to change. It makes as much sense to have a statue like that by the courthouse, which is supposed to represent equal protection under the law, as it would make sense to put a statue of a school shooter in front of a school and make people see a symbol of threat every day when they go to school. There's been some talk about the soldiers that didn't have graves, and the soldiers that had to leave their families. That was the core of slavery, was graves without headstones, without ceremonies, and ripping children from their families, tearing apart families, has been part of slavery. And just because soldiers sometimes left their families doesn't mean that they deserve a statue in front of our county. So I encourage you to take the statue down. Too many children, for too many generations, have had to pass that statue and face the symbols that it stands for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Folks, I know it's getting late and probably past some of our bedtimes, but let's really try and, you know, just maintain civility. Folks on both sides have said things that maybe we don't agree with, and that's okay. You don't necessarily have to let them know personally, and at that moment, let's just remain calm, give everybody their three minutes, and hope that they do the same for you, okay? Yes, sir.
All right. Y'all all heard everything about Southern heritage. I'm going to put this thing right down here. This is political. Anybody that's a Democrat in this business right here don't like Trump, don't like our Southern heritage. And I heard these Hispanic people up here for an hour talking about their heritage. What about mine? What about mine? I'm a Doubletree Confederate ancestry. They in the ground here, they stayed here, they fought here. And there's another thing. I'm going to have to call y'all out on this right here. Y'all just in this very place had a thing to honor Chatham County farmers, right? What does a monument downtown say? He was a farmer before he was a soldier. He came back here and was still a farmer. So y'all, that was all just a mess what y'all put out there. You can't respect one and disrespect the other. So thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, what was your name? Sir, what, sir, can you tell me what your name is?
E.B. Adams.
All right, thank you.
My name's Keon Beal. I'm an eighth-generation Chathamite. My family arrived here in seventeen sixty, eleven years before the county was formed. I want to thank Walter for his service, and also, he defeated me before he defeated Carl in two thousand and ten, but thank you for everything you've done, Walter. Like I said, I've been around a long time. My family's been here since seventeen sixty, and I had ancestors in the Revolutionary War, had three great-great-grandfathers in the Civil War. One of them was only eleven years old, so I probably would have had four. One of them was only 11-years-old, so I probably would've had four. That side of the family was Quaker, so it may not have been in it. But I also had ancestors from that side of the family that started one of the segments of Underground Railroad in Illinois. But anybody that knows me and knows my character knows that I have no discriminatory actions or bones in my body. I get along with everybody, have Hispanic friends, Black friends, and white friends. I don't even like to classify them by colors, 'cause all of them are friends. I do think the statue was erected as a memorial to the two thousand, over close to 2,000 family soldiers that represented Chatham County. A lot of them were killed away from home and never made it back. They didn't have a way to get the bodies back. Some did, but very few. But if you start getting rid of a few things, you're gonna have to keep on going, or they won't to, I'm afraid. Henry London, he's got a plaque in town there. He was the last carrier of a surrender order from Robert E. Lee. He went on to become a publisher, went to UNC, owned a newspaper here. His wife, Mrs. London, she started the UDC chapter here, and she's the one that wrote 1,600 letters and took three and a half years to get the statue erected. I don't think it was a band of hoodlums that decided, oh, we're gonna scare people. The soldier's there with his butt, the butt of the gun on the ground as a non-combative symbol. And people voted all over the county. They just didn't vote at the courthouse at Pittsburgh, so, you know, why anyone all over the county at every voting precinct? It's just, you gotta stop somewhere, and, you know, if anything with the Confederacy or anything to the South bothers you, then you probably have to stop drinking Coca-Cola because the man that invented it was a major in the Confederate Army.
Thanks, sir.
So where do you stop with it? I mean, and you can say what you want to, but if you read the Emancipation Proclamation, slavery didn't start in 1861. It started beginning of the country and before 1600s, I assume.
Thanks, sir.
And...
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I believe this is DA Clemens, Brian Cochran, Michael Manning. Just state your name when you get there.
All right, Brian Cochran. I'll make it short. So thank you for listening. I know it's a long evening, important topic. So thank you for listening, but I think Calvin should run for president, and he's right. It's 2019, it's time for change. And I just wanted to say how I feel, and I haven't heard the word sorrow tonight, but that's how I feel. I have a lot of family members who are African-American, who've been in North Carolina for generations, descendants of slaves, and they see that statue, they have sorrow. And they have sorrow, I have sorrow. It's hard to look at, it really is. It needs to go, it's 2019.
I'm a resident of Chatham County. I guess the first thing I hear is a disagreement, is whether the statue actually honors Confederate dead or if it really is upholding white supremacy. I see some things that, where we agree, war's hell. I think both sides, everybody agrees on that, and any memorial that would glorify war, we would all hate. I grew up in Albemarle, North Carolina. In front of my Albemarle Elementary School was our Confederate statue. And at the time, I thought it was just peculiar, and it didn't occur to me to ask whether it was honored the Confederate dead in elementary school or white supremacy. I took North Carolina History in the seventh grade and U.S. History in the eleventh grade, and they just skipped right over Wilmington Race Riot, lynching Jim Crow, suppression of Black people's votes. All that just got erased. Didn't happen. So I sort of see why, I didn't, I mean, when I was in elementary school, it didn't occur to me that the statue might have represented white supremacy. Now it does. I also realize that family histories are vague. I had to research my own family history. I had four great-grandfathers that lived in North Carolina at the start of the Civil War. Somebody said the rich man's war. The wealthiest one of the four, his father had 20 slaves. He was only 12 when the war started. He didn't fight in the war. The other three did. The two sort of middle-class overseer and a yeoman farmer fought for the Confederacy. The fourth one, the poorest of the four, was actually a North Carolina Union volunteer. So I guess that sort of draws some lesson from that. Do I have any time left?
You got a minute.
Okay, so one great-grandfather was at the center of the line in Cole Harbor. Grant sent untrained troops right in front of him. He'd been fighting for three years. He was very experienced. His job was to slaughter these people coming at him, and Grant would not hold a truce. The wounded just sit there for three days and moan. War's hell, regardless of whatever you say. The same great-grandfather and the one that fought for the Union faced each other, it turned out, second battle, Plymouth, North Carolina. So brother fighting brother. So I oppose, I support removing that statue from the courthouse. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure of this name. It might be Michael. And Janet Pate.
I'm Vaughn Upshaw. And my family came to North Carolina in the 1690s. I have been in North Carolina, was born here, raised as a North Carolinian. My family fought in the Civil War. There's a plaque in Waynesville. My great-great-great uncle was the last general of the Civil War to surrender to the Union. Unlike many others who've spoken here, I know my family owned slaves. They owned slaves, and they, my great-great-aunt was killed by her slave. They were not benevolent. They owned slaves because it was convenient for them to have other people do their work, and they got rich on the back of other people. They are still, still getting rich on the backs of other people because I am privileged based on my family's history here. My family fought so that I could have the things that I have now. My family fought so that I would have the privileges that I have now, and I'm grateful for that. And I honor that they did that for me. But I will not stand here and say that it's okay for us to continue to perpetuate a belief that somehow that symbol of racist white supremacy does not continue to perpetuate a belief that some people have more right to that privilege than other people. That that symbol continues to say in front of a courthouse that if you look like me, we'll treat you fairly. But if you look like someone else, you don't get the same benefit. You can look in our criminal justice system right now and see that we perpetuate the history that we have. You can look in our hospitals, you can look in our schools, and we perpetuate that now. It is our job, our job now, to say no more. I am an anti-racist because I've had the benefit of education, I've had the benefit and the privilege of being able to learn that we can evolve beyond the history that my ancestors put in place. And I am thankful to be a part of this county and this community where we are saying, we're done. And I thank you all for giving us a chance to have this public statement, but for me personally, I am ashamed of the things that my family did. And I want to be able to make right what hate and wrongness they did. And I honor my family. I am paying them back by standing here now and saying, I believe it is time for us to say no more.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to speak, and I'd like to thank the law enforcement for doing a great job for protecting us today. I'm a direct descendant of Captain William Blumberg of Chatham County. He was 14 when the war began. He was too young, but was a part of the local militia in this county, and he was elected as a lieutenant in the militia. The first draft, 1862, was it, the first draft of the war between the states was in 1862, and he was too young. In April 1864, 17- and 18-year-olds could join, and he did, and he was elected captain. His troops were just boys, just boys. He first fought at Pothr Point on Roanoke River. He defeated the Blue Coats. The next battle was all night, and a huge winter storm came, and their blankets froze to their bodies. When the war was over, he headed home with only a Bible and a knapsack that was stolen from him. At home, everything was impoverished, and he felt he had rather been dead than alive because his cousins had lost lives and lost limbs, and just so many were gone. He chose to work for the farm with very little. He worked very, very hard to just survive. In 1870, he married and did anything to raise his family. In 1898, he started a sawmill. William and other soldiers contributed hard work for Chatham County and for North Carolina. I have the blood of these brave men and women that were raised in the South with Christian values and virtues. I am not a neo-Confederate. My blood comes from my ancestors that fought and worked very hard themselves. I'm a native of Randolph County with ancestors that died from Chatham, Moore, Yadkin, and Surrey Counties. If I looked at the Commissioners here, none are native to this area. You cannot imagine the pride, love that we, the born citizens of this area, have. We honor the dead. You're using this issue as a political pawn to go get the minority votes. That's all this is for. We welcome all, everyone, but as everyone else, we expect our cultures and our values of those that built this wonderful community to be honored also. Outsiders come because Southerners are very welcoming, friendly, and honorable. Residents had come in and want to destroy our culture, our monuments and memorials. They are attacking us, doxing us, and threatening us with violence.
Thank you.
I've been at UNC, I have been cussed, I have been spit at, and the main ones is sitting right here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Nathan Conroy, Scott Gilmore.
Wait. I'm sorry. Mike. I was...
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
That's all. That's all. I'm gonna be back. Mike Wiley.
Mike Wiley.
Mm-hmm. Good evening. And as I watch tonight, I think of a poem by Langston Hughes, written around the time a number of these statues were erected. And that poem is titled "I Too." "I too sing America. I am the darker brother. They send me to eat in the kitchen when company comes, but I laugh, I eat well, and I grow strong." What one of our great poets, Langston Hughes, was saying by "I Too Sing America" was that he himself was as American as white Americans. That he himself dreamed the same dreams as those white Americans, but was not given the same opportunities as those individuals. So as I listen to folks, and they talk about the history of the statue, and they talk about the history and denial of what that statue truly means, I think about another quote, and that is "the wetness of water." Someone once said that a number of white folks in the South can no more talk about or understand racism than a fish might discuss. The wetness of water is because they swim in it, they live in it, they were born in it, and so therefore, it makes it hard for them to see it. So sometimes you have to put it where the goats can get it. And what I mean by that is "I too sing America." I'm from the South, born and raised in the South. And what a lot of folks aren't saying is, that's my statue too. That's my flag. I am a Southerner. I have an uncle that is kind of wild, kind of odd. We don't like him to speak at his family functions. He's always that uncle that says, "Bring me back a plate." And we don't mind bringing back a plate, 'cause we don't want him to come with us. What I mean by that is that because that is also my statue, and because that is also my uncle, I'm not saying destroy that statue, but I'm also saying that we don't put my uncle out on Front Street.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight to voice my opinion, as is so is everybody else.
What's your name, sir?
My name's Scott Gilmore. I was raised here in Towne County. I've been here 50-some years. And what I see here tonight is a damned disgrace that we ain't all get along. Put the history past us and move on. Our children learn from stories told from their fathers, their forefathers, their forefathers. History is history. Move on. Start living with each other. I want the statue to stay. One, it reminds me what I fought for this country, my heart, my blood, to find people arguing. A statue's over 100 years old. Learn to live with each other. If not, we are gonna be divided from inside, and exactly what's happened to us right now. It's hairy for a lot of us, by hate. What our forefathers did before us, we can't change it, but it is. Quit living in the past. Quit trying to teach our children to hate. I also cherish the Indian. Where's our statue? Right? You don't hear our praise or how, but I look right here, right now, and most people will raise a hell about this, or wipe. There's a lot of people, black people, are not happy with the situation, but it is a heritage. It was for veterans. It was for a lot of different reasons. It is what everybody makes of the symbol of. Cut the head out. It's time to be over that shit. We got worse enemies knocking on our damn door now. Well, that's history upon itself, over a friggin' statue that ain't earned a damn soul, but it reminds me of one thing, what not to do the next time. Don't let it happen again, because you keep it up, that's what's gonna happen now. Wake up, grow up, teach your children the right history. Books written in the North says one thing, books written in the South says another thing. A lot of it comes together, it's the truth. A lot of people hurt on both sides. And I don't care about that, that's beautiful.
Thanks, sir.
Because it's my freedom of speech, and I got the right to walk up here and talk. I fought for that, I fought for every one of you.
Thank you, sir.
Now you got the right to voice your opinion, everybody's got it. World rights one are gone. Leave it be, because the courthouse is public domain. It is a museum. It is in the museum area. Leave it alone.
Thank you.
Lindsey, how many, how many more? How many more? One.
Uh, excuse me. I'm Nathan Conroy. I live in Mount Vernon Springs. Um, I'm a transplant. I grew up on a dairy farm in New York State, where my ancestors sold wool to the Union Army to make their uniforms. When I moved to Chatham County in 1995 with my wife, who is from North Carolina, um, I was greeted in Pittsburgh by the statue in front of the courthouse. I thought this was unusual, but didn't think too much about it. I didn't know a lot about the Civil War. I didn't learn about it in my high school education up north. I appreciate my friends and neighbors who see the monument as a way to honor their fallen ancestors. I really do, and I feel for you. But as I raise my family in this diverse and changing community, it has become clear to me that for our minority brothers and sisters, and for their supporters, the Confederate statue stands as a symbol of the fight for slavery and segregation. I have seen no minority speakers in favor of keeping the statue tonight. It is time to move forward and free our community of this symbol of intolerance. The law is on your side tonight, commissioners. They've given you a pathway. I hope you'll find the courage to make this happen. Thank you.
No one else has signed up to speak.
Woo! Nice job, Chatham County. Making us proud. Um, discussion, thoughts? If you'll all remember, way back an hour or so ago, we had a presentation, so, uh, let's try and wrap that up and just, uh... Any thoughts?
Lots of thoughts.
Questions?
Um, well, I, I, I do, I'm fine with us thinking. Um, I do wanna address a couple of things, uh, as the sole minority on the board. There was something that was very marked to me tonight, that I could tell whether a person was for keeping the statue or for getting rid of the statue, based on whether they actually looked at me. And I could tell before I, they got to the point, and that was disheartening. But it was reinforced over and over again in the language that was used. Multiple times, I heard the term, the words "we" and "us" used as an exclusion, not inclusively. And to my mind, "we" and "us" is all-encompassing. It is inclusionary only. So when that, when the, when a phrase is thrown out that "we feel," "we believe," "us," and it excludes "me," it excludes people like me, it excludes people who have had my experience, it's not "we," and you don't get to claim it. So I'm taking it back. I also heard several people refer to, say, that most people did not own slaves, or my relatives did not own slaves. Um, the connotation being that they were people, and then they were slaves. That was not the situation. There were people owning other people in an institution of slavery. There were no slaves. We didn't go to Africa and pick up slaves. We went to a country, stole people, and enslaved them. So there was not no, there was no, "People did not own slaves, people owned people." And we have to keep that present in our minds. Someone referred to their generations and generations and generations of family and knowing the names. Well, I don't, 'cause the records we kept on slaves were pretty darn pathetic. So I don't have the privilege and honor of saying what my great-great-great-great-grandfather's name was, or even where he came from. So if some people feel as though they can look at this board and decide by looking at us where we might land on this issue, and if those very same people say that that statue is a symbol of, of pride and our ancestry and who we are and where we came from, then those people are right. Look at this board and value my judgment, my experience, my opinion, my position, and, and acknowledge that when you were saying "me" and you were saying "are," you were not referring to mine. And so if, if a symbol does not adequately reflect, respect, honor, dignify, lift up all of us, regardless of whether I thought it was right, or someone else in another corner thought it was right, it doesn't reflect all of us. And if, you know, and, and maybe this board and I will have a disagreement, I don't know. But I think that's something we should all stop and be thinking about. I, I was very sad to hear some of the comments. It sounded as though people weren't in the room when the presentation was done. That's not very fifth grade. I'm sorry. At the very least, we can say that fifth graders, at the end of the day, are smarter than they were when they walked in the classroom that morning. And if we didn't hear the presentation, if we didn't listen to it, and it made no impact on us, then we really have just wasted all of our collective time, because what we're saying, I hope what we were saying when we came into this room was that we all had something to learn and something to hear. And I certainly learned something of, of hearing the opinions of people who do feel it simply is a reflection of their heritage. I learned something. But I also learned that there can't be a my heritage and your heritage. It has to be a collective. And, and so that is where I intend to land. It is no different than where I intended to land before, but I have some very different feelings about why I want to land there. And as the sole minority on the, I was happy to hear, you know, two other people of color speak tonight. The reason maybe that some of you haven't heard a whole heck of a lot of people of color speak out is because there aren't that many of us left, 'cause quite frankly, it's hard to convince your kids and grandkids to stay in Chatham County. Um, I'd like to see that change. I'd like to see our African-American population grow, because we feel included and valued and important. And so that, that's really all I wanted to say.
Any other reflections?
Again, I appreciate, uh, the fact that so many, uh, people in Chatham County, uh, came out to participate, hopefully to hear, to listen, and, uh, to express their concerns and their family's history, and also the, uh, larger history of the Daughters of the Confederacy. And I'm very glad that as many people are still here in this room, uh, right now, because this is, you know, Commissioner Howard was listening through her lens, and I was listening through mine, that totally understands Gettysburg, uh, having been raised in Pennsylvania. Uh, but this is my home, thirty-five years. And in looking at the statue, I think there is, uh, it was placed in the most prominent civic square in Chatham County. That's where most of the monuments were placed. The place of business, the civic square, this is where you come to do all your business. You get a marriage license, you, um, have land records, you have a deed. This was the place you came. So that made it the most public focal point of Chatham County, and in fact, every county. This was where the public did its business. That is why the statue was there. So, um, I think, uh, well, let's see if, I, uh, if we're ready to, um, discuss a next step, or other people wanna talk right now.
Anyone else?
You've exceeded this professor's capacity to handle words tonight.
Wow.
So I reserve my time for a later time.
I would certainly entertain a motion to refer it to staff, but, you know, I, I think it's the board's prerogative, you know?
I, I would like, um, to make a motion that we direct staff, um, to further investigate our opportunity, um, to remove the statue, reoffer it to the Daughters of the Confederacy.
Yeah, and as, oh, I second that, and, um, as we...
Just to, to clarify, and again, this is not a conversation, public input is over, the matter will be referred to the county attorney, I think is the motion, for an opinion.
For an opinion.
And that is all. We have been presented with a legal opinion from a group of residents, and we will certainly, before acting on it, make sure that our county attorney has a chance to review it. Is that correct?
Yes. There, there are, um, we haven't, uh, there are, um, several poss, there are several tracts, and the question is, what is, uh, what does the, uh, North Carolina statute actually say as we look at the, um, uh, conditions, the legal conditions in Chatham County? So I think that's a first step.
to work with, rather than, um, rather than what our actions, we, we...
Yeah.
The motion indicates the decision has been made as to what we're gonna do.
No, so the motion indicated that we would like to have the attorney investigate our ability to remove the Confederate statue and reoffer it to the Daughters of the Confederacy. That was my motion. I think we've, we've been back and forth on that question before, about, as to whether or not we want to consider it. What we want to know now is what are our legal options in that regard?
Motion's been made, and I, I think, just for clarification, I, I think this is what we would generally do on any item brought to the commissioners by a group of residents. The kind of default position is to have staff look at it before we act on it, so, um, I, I don't think this vote is not to remove the statue or anything close to it. It is simply to get the county attorney's legal opinion. Fair enough? Motion was made. I did not hear a second. Motion, okay, was made in seconds. Any further discussion?
Well, I'd just like to say that I think it's pretty evident tonight that this is no win-win situation for anybody, because everyone is not gonna walk away from here happy, regardless of how this turns out. I think we're out of time.
Someone leans against the panel back there.
Um, the lights went out while I was talking, so I guess that's an indication. No, I, I just, I just wanted to say that, you know, we have to acknowledge the fact that everyone is not gonna be happy with the outcome. I mean, you've got people that wanna keep it, people wanna get rid of it, and, uh, quite honestly, removing it or leaving it is not gonna fix the problem. The problem that we, the problem we have, we're dealing with a symptom. The statue's a symptom. It's not the problem. The problem's hearts of people. Until a heart is right, we're always gonna have division and separation. We're gonna have people that take issues and take sides to try to cause division and separation, because that's what weakens us. Vision separation's what weakens us. It's when we work together that it makes us strong. Somehow or another, we gotta find a way to come out of this stronger and not weaker. We gotta find a way to come out of this without more division or separation. I do not have the answer. I'm not that smart, but I know what the problem is. We have an adversary that causes us to, cause division and strife between husband and wife, man and woman, child, parent, race against ration, nation against nation. We're, we're not fighting one another. We're, we're, we're just pawns in a, in a, in a big fight, that's controlled by an adversary that we, we've gotta get control over. Um, I, you know, I don't know where this will go. I just would say that we need to recognize that slavery was wrong. Slavery is wrong. No one should own another man or another woman. That was some dark days in our history, some bad things happened, some evil things happened. I don't think there was anyone here tonight that indicated in any way that that was right. I think if there's, if there's a way to solve this, what I kept hearing come up was, "It's about this, it's about that, it's about the other." If there's a way to truly get the emotion out of it and get the feelings out of it, and define what the purpose of that statue was, then the decision becomes easy. If it was truly about heritage, decision becomes easy. If it was truly about slavery, decision becomes easy. If we can define the true purpose of that statue, rather than everyone's emotion, then the decision's easy. That's the challenge. I would love to see our motion, rather than sound like it was decided, and say that we want our attorney to tell us what our opportunities are to remove this statue, I would rather see the motion say, "Let's instruct this, the..." see the motion say, "Let's instruct this, the attorney, to tell us what our options are, what is right legally, what is not right legally, and if it comes back to move it with some options to move it," instead of predetermining. The motion sounds like it's predetermined what we're gonna do.
Well, because if we're opting to keep it, there's nothing to do. I mean, there's no... So the only action item would be an action toward.
Okay. I call the question.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, managers' reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would you like to take just a brief moment?
Yeah, well, let you all exit.
So here we go. All right, folks. So, folks, that was the end of the meeting. And here at ToshTalk.com, we like to say we discuss, we define, and we deliver. There was discussion, people defined their sides, but there is no deliverables from this as of yet. This will continue to be a conversation, very emotional, very polarizing. So we'll see. ToshTalk.com, discuss, define, deliver. Keep watching. We will have the entire livestream up on ToshTalk.com here in just a bit. So if you missed any, it's in three segments. We had to change the stream a bit, but it is all going to be on ToshTalk.com for your review and your enjoyment. And please, let me know your feedback, all right? You guys know how to get in touch with me. Appreciate you all very much. ToshTalk.com, discuss, define, deliver. Peace.